Big words.
During the meeting, back over.
Okay, welcome to the Queen Anne's County Commissioners Meeting. This is a public meeting that is being aired live on our local cable television station, QAC-TV seven. These media broadcasts provide county citizens an opportunity to watch and review our scheduled public meetings. In addition to our live audience this evening, we are providing remote options for citizens to watch and participate in county commissioner meetings. Citizens may watch our meeting live on our website at QAC.org/live or our television channel, Breezeline Channel seven and High Definition Channel 507. Citizens may also participate by joining the live Zoom meeting by going to QAC.org-publiccomment. Citizens may also email comments to publiccomment@QAC.org. Comments received will be summarized during the press and public comment period on this evening's agenda. We acknowledge everyone's participation, and by attending, you acknowledge that this session is both recorded and aired. Press and public comment will be taken and is limited to three minutes per person. If you do care to speak, please sign up at the information table in our lobby. Comments longer than three minutes can be submitted in writing for the Commissioner's review. We will now stand and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by President Jim Moran.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, we can move into the approval of tonight's agenda for our meeting April ninth. So our agenda, along with the regular session minutes, the closed session minutes, and the sanitary commission minutes from March twenty-sixth have been circulated for review. In addition to those, we also circulated our budget workshop meeting minutes from March twenty-eighth and April second for review. Do we have any additions or corrections?
Non. Motion to accept the agenda as submitted and all minutes as submitted.
Second.
We got a motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, motion third, second, opposed, hang on.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, we just had a closed session under General Provisions Article Section 3305B7 to consult with council and Section 3305B1 to discuss personnel, and no decisions were made in the closed session. Okay, so we can move into press and public comments. So we appreciate all citizens for taking time to express your views to the county commissioners. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Comments longer than three minutes may be submitted in writing. This commission respects your desire and right to convey your message freely. When you come forward, please speak at the standing microphone, state your name, your address, and your topic of interest, and in keeping with the dignity of our office, we ask that all views be expressed in a respectful and civil manner.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Clark. I live on 308 Larch Place in Stevensville, Maryland, in Stevensville's Cloverfields community. I'm here today to thank and recognize Jeff Crossato, Katie Heikus, Neil Matthews, and Keeper Pollan of Queen Anne County's Kent Island Volunteer Fire Department Station One, as well as Stephen Kelly, Pam Wise, Bethany Klassing, Andrew Welsh, Alyssa Clayville, Denise Ornduff, and Wilson Keeter from Queen Anne County's Emergency Medical Services Station one hundred. You helped to save my life on Sunday, February fourth. During the early afternoon of February fourth, I unexpectedly suffered a widowmaker heart attack while jogging near my house on Kimberly Way. In case anyone does not know, a widowmaker heart attack occurs when the left anterior descending artery cannot transport life-sustaining blood to the heart. According to the American Heart Association, there's about a 12% survival rate when someone suffers a widowmaker heart attack outside of a hospital or advanced care facility. Also, I did not know it at the time, but my body was fighting an undiagnosed case of pneumonia. When I suffered my heart attack, I abruptly fell back to the ground and my heart stopped beating. After Dean and Eddie Zador assisted me and called 911, you quickly arrived at the scene and used an automated external defibrillator to restart my heart. You also sedated, intubated, and stabilized me as you contacted my wife, Megan, and securely transported me to Anorondal Medical Center for emergency heart surgery. After AAMC admitted me, Dr. Matthew Sarny, a heart surgeon and Miss Assistant Professor of Medicine at Johns Hopkins University, who happened to be on duty, worked with his team to quickly identify the blockage in my LAD artery. Subsequently, as part of an exceedingly difficult surgical procedure, he was able to successfully insert a stent in the artery and restore blood flow to my heart. With tears in his eyes, Dr. Sarny came out after the surgery to pray with my wife, sister, and dear friends from our church. While Dr. Sarny was hopeful, I was not out of the woods, and doctors were concerned about possible brain damage. When I woke up from a medically induced coma about forty-eight hours after the surgery, though, I quickly regained mental cognition and strength, and AAMC discharged me on February tenth. After you rescued me and called my wife, Megan, she contacted our church pastor, family, and friends. Subsequently, people were praying to Jesus for my recovery from coast to coast and around the world. After the Lord Jesus Christ then miraculously saved my life again, people from all over the hospital were visiting me in my intensive care unit room to marvel at the speed, breadth, and depth of my recovery. If your units did not quickly take action to rescue and transport me to AAMC on February fourth, though, I not only would have most likely died, but I would not have another story of God's miraculous grace to share with everyone today. He was with you as we prepared to become first responders, and He was with us when He meant for you to rescue me and glorify Him on February fourth. As my wife and I thank you for your service from our hearts, we also pray that we may wholeheartedly desire to know love and glorify Jesus Christ today and for the rest of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Amazing.
Thank you. It is.
That's all signed up, and anybody else like to speak?
You can't follow that.
I was just gonna say.
How do you follow that?
There's no following that.
Your walking miracle, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have permission to send your clip to our EMS folks? Bruce, thanks. Yes.
You certainly will, yeah.
And to Kent Island Fire Department, Bruce?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, we can move into presentations for this evening. That is a tough act to follow, for sure. So if you want to turn to tab number six, first up, we have Character Counts. So Melinda Ray is here, and she's gonna present this week's spotlight. It is trustworthy.
As he was speaking, my thoughts were immediately a future spotlight for the volunteer firefighters of our county would be.
Yeah.
Little biased, my son is one, but I digress. So as usual, Character Counts is doing really well. It is April ninth. My one-year anniversary in this position will be April twelfth, so I am coming up in one year, and it has been wonderful. I've loved it, every second of it. So I am happy to report, we now have one hundred and two volunteers, which is awesome. We have forty-two enrolled businesses of character. This has all happened within the past year. We just created a partnership with our Parks and Recs Department to bring Character Counts to youth sports and our athletic facilities, which I'm very, very excited about.
Great idea.
Yeah, very excited about that partnership. We started school staff recognitions a few months ago, and as of this morning, we had two hundred and six nominations for QACP staff members, and we have recognized one hundred and sixty-four people. I was at six different schools today. So that has been really, really wonderful. I wanted to remind the public that our Teen of Character scholarships are still open. The deadline to submit an application is next week. It's April nineteenth, so next Friday, and you can find applications on our website, PeopleOfCharacter.org, as well as the guidance offices of both of the high schools. And then, just looking forward to the summer, we've got our event season ramping up. We'll be doing a lot of events in the county. Our appreciation dinner for our volunteers is next week. We've got the CMS Spring thing coming up on April twenty-fifth, and in May, we have the Queen Anne's County Senior Summit, both the senior nights at both high schools and the Kent Island Day Parade. So that's just through May. So very busy, keeping busy, but it's been wonderful.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yep, I have the Queen Anne's County Commissioners Character Counts Spotlight for April twenty-four. The Character Counts pillar celebrated in April's trustworthiness. Trust is something that is earned by demonstrating loyalty, standing by set values, and showing consistency in actions. This month's honoree, the Queen Anne's County Council for Children and Youth, has been stepping up to advocate for children in Queen Anne's County since nineteen seventy-one. Fundly referred to as Children's Council, this group is populated by members representing numerous agencies, initiatives, and businesses who collaborate to find ways to solve the challenges that face the children and youth of Queen Anne's County. There are three stated goals of to identify the health and social needs of children and their families, assist in the organization of community resources to meet those needs, and act as an advocate when warranted. This month, the Children's Council is celebrating April as the month of the young child for the twenty-seventh year. You can find an interactive calendar of events to help you join the celebration on the Character Counts website. There are so many ways for you to support the Queen Anne's County Council for Children and Youth, from serving as a member on the council to making financial or material donations. To learn more, visit Queen Anne's County Character Counts website, www PeopleOfCharacter.org. While you're there, be sure to nominate a worthy business, nonprofit, or individual in the county, except for finding one of all the six pillars, or all of all the six pillars of character for a future spotlight recognition. So I would encourage anybody, just go take a look at the website. Again, www PeopleOfCharacter.org, and find out what the heck is going on, because they're doing amazing stuff.
Yeah, we are definitely doing amazing stuff, and so is the Children's Council. So it's been fun. So thank you, gentlemen.
So your dinner's next week?
Yeah, it's eighteen. I'll see you there.
Yeah, so, well, we have a meeting at the college.
Oh, okay.
So as soon as we can get done there and come a running.
I think they're gonna try to work on getting us a sheriff's escort, right?
Faster is better.
Faster is better.
Of course, the sheriff doesn't know that yet.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Phil, you drive faster than the sheriff anyhow.
Got the silver bullet.
All right, Commissioners, our next presentation is from Economic Development and Tourism. This is Ms. Heather Tenelli, our director, is presenting her quarterly update for her department. It's item two, tab six, pages two through forty-three, and it's up on the screen here for your viewing pleasure as well. Tab six, item two, yeah, right behind this one, yeah, next page.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to come before you and speak. It's been some time since October, but we have been very busy since then, and I hope that you've seen our efforts out in the community. The first slide I wanted to share with you is our key performance indicators, things that we're able to watch. Some of the things that we look at on a regular basis, you're unable to pull on a monthly basis, so we look at it quarterly, annually. One of the easiest things to look at is our unemployment rate, which is currently two-point three. We're not number one, we're number two. Carol is number one at two-point-two percent unemployment rate as of.
Who is?
Carol. Two-point-two. Two-point-two, or two-point-three. And as I've mentioned before, although it's great to have a low unemployment rate, it also means that we have jobs out there that are unfilled. So we have to keep that in mind. We hear that.
Or counting rounds or numbers down, so.
Yeah, yeah. As of a couple months ago, when I had this slide updated, we were at one-point-seven. So it fluctuates a little bit here and there, but nothing to be alarming. And we have a four-point-eight percent growth in our GDP, and that's in 2022. Again, these numbers take some time to come out, but it's something that we watch, and we'll continue to share those numbers. As far as our pipeline, several years ago, we purchased a CRM or Customer Relationship Management software that enables us to keep track of the deals we're working on and close so that we can better understand what our impact is. So in 2020, these are in 2022, we closed or helped in closing seventeen-point-nine million dollars in deals, and those are either property purchases or grant funds or economic development incentive fund loans or enterprise tax credits, a combination of those, so a pretty good year. And currently, we have forty-five-point-seven million dollars in deals in process. And again, those are whether it's property purchases or companies looking to move here, grants, loans, just a variety of things. And we're actively marketing fifteen properties, and several of those, I'm sure you probably see when you drive up and down fifty-three-oh-one in the Graysonville corridor from Kent Island through Queenstown, you'll see several properties that are for sale that are commercial. So, and there's been a lot of interest in those. I have wanted to highlight that one of the things that we do on a monthly basis is we staff the Economic Development Commission, the Travel and Tourism Advisory Committee, the Economic Development Incentive Fund, and the Stevensville A&E District. In addition to that, we attend the monthly K-NDF meetings, the STACK meetings, the Planning Department whenever we can, and then the monthly tourism meetings that occur within the state. So we try to make sure that we are actively involved in those. Some of the changes that are coming about with the EDC that I wanted to share, that I feel is really good, we have a new executive committee. Heather Bakker is our chair, and Shelley Grosswaite is our vice chair, and then Lee Bridgman is our secretary, and Ed Beers is our treasurer. And they're looking to start to bring businesses in on a monthly basis and highlight those that have received Economic Development Incentive Fund grants, and there's a lot of exciting things. Another thing that the EDC is planning to do in conjunction with our department, obviously, is do a North County business tour, and we're gonna use one of the county ride buses. They were gracious enough to let us use it for that day, and we're gonna try to bring resources, we're calling it a resource road trip. We're, I don't have it listed on the slide, but we're gonna bring in resources specific to what the business needs are, spend twenty minutes to a half an hour with them, and hopefully connect them to resources that they may need. I wanted to share this with you. This was in February, I believe. We worked with our other Eastern Shore Economic Development Directors and organized a presentation to our Eastern Shore delegation. Our tourism partners did that as well, but we thought it was important that we shared the projects that we were working on as a region. We work together quite frequently, and you can see the economic impact, which we believe is very low, that every dollar spent, nine-point-seven-nine dollars and seventeen cents is returned on that investment. We do believe that's a low number, but still a pretty good one. Commercial property values, this is within the state, are valued at sixty-one-point-five billion dollars. And the unemployment rate, just so that you kind of can see how well Queen Anne's County is doing in 2022, the average unemployment rate in the state was three-point-two percent, and, you know, as I've mentioned before, we're lower than that. I won't go into all the projects, because I know you've heard these quite frequently from us as we come in, but the Rural Economic Development Funds, Rural Maryland Economic Development Fund, which we know our county received two-point-nine million, and we took on eleven projects. I just wanted to highlight just a few of those. The Queen Anne's County Four-H Park, that was our largest one, at one-point-two million, and we just finished out funding for that, and they have done a lot of work in a short amount of time and have been extremely efficient, and we're really excited about that project and the impact that it's gonna have on our agriculture community as well as our community at large. So we're really happy with that one. Some of the others that are underway is our Minority and Entrepreneurship Training Accelerator. That was one where we funded seventy-five thousand dollars. We have five minority companies within that training program currently, and it's well underway, and we'll share more with you as that proceeds. And the last one that I'll mention is we are working with our Planning Department and the Agriculture Extension Office, Jenny Rhodes and Lee Bridgman, on an agritourism land use study through the comp plan process. One of the goals or strategies that were mentioned or highlighted in that is to look at our land use and our code as it relates to agritourism and how do we support that industry. So we're working together on a study, and that's actually kicking off on Friday, and that was funded through this program, so no money's out of pocket for Queen Anne's County, but we believe that that's gonna be underway and done in August in time to be able to implement some of the strategies and information that's provided in that study. I won't talk too much about these, because they're on that prior slide, but these are some of the projects and studies, all of which but one are funded through that Rural Maryland Grant Program. The only one that was not is the Economic Development Incentive Fund study, and I'm gonna talk about that a little bit later, but they're all underway and should be done by November, and they're really gonna help us plan for our future and what our focus will be in Queen Anne's County as far as economic development and tourism and community development. I thought it'd be fun to highlight some of the tours that we recently did. Queen Anne's County has been in the spotlight, and we're super happy about that. We consider ourselves the hospitality arm here in the county, and the front-facing, you know, if you look at front-facing, back-facing, back of the house, front of the house, restaurants, we kind of consider ourselves the front of the house. We helped design a tour for the Secretary of Department of Agriculture. Secretary Addicks was here on Good Friday and toured some of our farms in Queen Anne's and Kent County, and then he had a great session with some of our farmers in the area in Queen Anne's County, and that was really great. And then Secretary of DHCD, Secretary Day, was here for a full day, and I saw several of our commissioners were able to attend as well, and we partnered with Mike Clark and his team, as well as our Planning Department, on that tour, and Beth Malaski, and we planned that out strategically, and we packed it full for the day, but it was great to hear, because there's a lot of programs that happen within the county that I don't know about, and it was really cool to hear our secretary to say that, you know, we're at the front of the line when it comes to our policies as far as homelessness and affordable housing and some of the code changes that we already have in place. So it was just kudos to those that work in those areas within the county. It's kind of nice to hear that we're forward-thinking and setting the tone for the rest of the state in a lot of ways. This past Friday, we hosted all of the Maryland tourism professionals in our visitor center upstairs in the Barrett Room. We had thirty of them here for the day, and then they came back today, again, at the Hyatt, they were here for the whole day for a session with all of our partners and restaurants and hotels on how to promote the area and work with the state of Maryland. So we've had a lot of visitors throughout the state coming within the last two weeks, and it's been a lot of fun. Some of the programs that we're working on, and one of them I just left today, just left Washington College to come here, is we worked with Kent and Cecil and Washington College and Chesapeake College on a pitch competition, which was called Start One Up Roadshow, and any companies, whether they were in the initial phases, idea phases, bootstrap phase, whatever phase, they could apply, and we had twenty applicants and worked regionally to determine who was gonna actually pitch, and we had at least four Queen Anne's County companies that were able to pitch. I haven't got my text on who won. There was a four-thousand-dollar prize that they could then use to grow their companies in whatever means they felt necessary, but it was a really great event, and we had them stop at Chesapeake College first today at nine-thirty, and we had some of our partners, Beth was able to come, and our Chamber of Commerce, and we took them on a tour of our advanced manufacturing labs and the marine trades labs, and talked to them about what the college's plan was for the future, and it was really, really great to be able to showcase what's currently happening and what the plan is for the future. I wanted to give you an update on our hotel taxes. It's another metric or KPI that we track regularly, and what you're looking at is a calendar year versus a fiscal year. We had one-point-one million dollars in hotel tax revenue in 2023, that's January through December. If you look at it from a fiscal year, we were at nine-hundred-and-ninety-something, I can't remember the exact number, but overall, we realized a twenty-four percent increase from twenty-two to twenty-three. Some of that has to do with having more rooms with the Hyatt and higher hotel prices. Average daily rate is higher than usual, but overall, continued growth and continued visitor traffic. I'm gonna skip over these, but these are, I wanted to show you some of the ads that you're not gonna normally see. I don't know whether you recognize anybody in the.
Tell Vida that we thank him for taking one for the team.
Yeah, yeah, we had two models scheduled for that day, and they backed out because they were sick, so we said we'd do it, but that's not why I'm showing you, but I thought it was funny to see it. But we do heavily market to the drive market as well as the overnight, as our overall goal is to have overnight stays within our area, and you can see, you know, in the wintertime, we focus on oysters, and that's where shore flavors begin, and the one on the left advertised our boat show last year. The boat show is coming this upcoming weekend, and we believe the weather's gonna be great, and there'll be a great turnout for that. Some of our social media campaigns, again, I won't go into great detail with that, but as you may remember, we won the state award for the Crabs and Crushes campaign. That reached over one-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand people, twenty-thousand clicks, and I believe the views were in the millions when it was all said and done. And this is some more of the collateral. We plan to roll this out again this year. The Crabs and Crushes campaign will be extended, and we'll continue partnerships with all of our restaurants. We actually have a crush tour coming the beginning of May from Baltimore, where it's a bus that they're gonna come and go to all the different restaurants and try the different crushes. These are some stats that you haven't seen before. Again, sometimes some of the information we get is quite a bit delayed. Our visitor statistics, we had three-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand visitors in 2022, which was up from the prior year. Visitor spending is estimated at one-hundred-and-sixty-eight million, which is a seven percent increase, and then that's a picture of the visitor center at the outlets. I just wanted to point out a few great things that our grant was able to do. The Rural Maryland Economic Development Fund allocated six-hundred-thousand dollars to set up the career centers in both of our high schools, as well as hire two career coaches, and then buy some equipment as well. Those have been stood up and are operating and are really doing great. They worked together with Connie Dean, who is in our office, in order to take all of the sophomores that were interested to go see Chesapeake College and all their trades programs, and they integrated some of the local businesses to be part of the tours, and it was a great success. So far, they've reported, this is in 2022, or since August of 2023 through the year, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine internships, two-hundred-and-twenty-two were at Queen Anne's County, and seventy-seven at Kent Island High School, and eight apprenticeships. They continue to work with the state's apprenticeship program and youth apprenticeship program to develop those. Eighteen businesses approved to offer apprenticeships, and five businesses are in the process of applying. What we find that's slow, and we're working on, and we feel the career coaches are really gonna make a difference, is filling those apprenticeships that are there and ready to go, because we want to make sure to get students into those. And these are the, a picture of the sophomore tours that I was telling you about a minute ago. Four-hundred students, our sophomores, participated over two days in those tours, and what was really great is they surveyed them using a QR code in their phones, and many of them talked. many of them talked about the careers that they saw that they didn't know they registered in until they were able to tour those classrooms and they really will now follow up to make sure those students are engaged and learning more about those careers and the potential of moving from the high school into Chesapeake College to pursue those opportunities. And then with JA Aspire, which is Junior Achievement of the Eastern Shore, all of our seventh graders will go to that program and they go to Salisbury and get to see different regional employers. And that has been a great success. Prior to Connie starting, our school system was involved with this program, but we were affiliated with the Western Shore and our students were unable to participate in this type of programming where they get to go and do the hands-on. And now, our school system is affiliated with the Eastern Shore side of things and are able to go and participate in more of the great opportunities that are And last but not least, I wanted to talk to you a little bit more about our Economic Development Incentive Fund. As you, I'm sure, remember, we were able to refill the pot as I would say. The loan fund was down to under two-hundred-thousand dollars and during last fiscal year, this group approved additional funding through moving our revolving loan funds over as well as operating funds to be able to bring the new dollar amount up to one-point-two million. We have continued to operate the program as it was set up, but with the reinvestment in the fund, we were given a proposal and then had a look at the fund as a whole and how we can improve it and how we can maintain it because if it continues as only, as grant-only or conditional loan, which means if they meet their, the details within their agreements, if they create the jobs they say they're going to create and stay open and meet all the expectations within their loan document, that loan becomes a grant. And so, if all of the funding that we provide is grant funding, eventually that loan fund will run out of money. It's not going to happen overnight, but it's something to certainly think about. Some of the other recommendations that came out of that study were looking at improving and potentially outsourcing the underwriting. I see that as a need if we are to move into conventional type or low-doc loans. Our revolving loan fund that we had before I started here did offer those kind of loans and we've moved that money into this fund. So, one of the recommendations was, as we look at that one-point-two million dollars and two-hundred-and-forty of it is allocated for workforce development. So, we know what that belongs to. And then so, the remaining one million, which is a little less now because of Lent, I'm suggesting that we look at offering, continuing to offer some of the conditional loans as we do that are grants really, and then also looking at offering some low-interest conventional loans as part of that program so that as those loans repay, then the money goes back in the pot and then we're able to continue funding businesses.
But Heather, would that sort of serve two different types of businesses? Like, so the low-interest rates, would those be tied to how many jobs they create like the grants are or do you have sort of different requirements for the low-interest?
It would be different requirements. I would imagine that the interest rate would be a fixed rate and it wouldn't be variable, meaning we wouldn't sit the interest rate based on the type of company. But this whole program was set up so that it's not to compete with the banks, it's to fund businesses that maybe can't go get all of the funding from conventional lending and/or they're unable to get any because of whatever reason, they don't have collateral, they're just starting out, they're not ready yet. So, I would envision that the interest rate would remain the same no matter what, but that the terms within the agreement would be specified to the type of industry. One of the other recommendations that came out of it, which I thought was great because we had community buy-in, a couple of different meetings, is they suggested that we have a low-doc loan that's simplified, a lower amount, it doesn't take a lot of time to go through, but there's also a lot of, not a lot of risk involved. So, twenty thousand or under, maybe ten thousand or under, simplified process, simplified loan docs, but it could have immense impact. I mean, this program has had a huge impact as it stands now, but even a ten-thousand-dollar loan could be a big deal for a company that's just starting out. I heard that today, listening to the pitch competitions. You know, there were some great companies there that, that size money, although it's not, you know, a hundred-thousand dollars, it still can make a great impact on a company that's getting started. Another suggestion that has been floated and I think it's a great idea and I've provided the full study for you to look at as well when you can, is looking at leveraging some of these funds with public dollars and private dollars, meaning working with our banks that are in the area that have the need for CRA credits or and/or want to help our economic development within Queen Anne's County grow, is looking at bank, leveraging some bank funds, seeing if they want to start a local fund, whether it's regional or Queen Anne's County alone. And then they would have a loan fund available for, that would then keep the monies that we have, the, let's say, five-hundred-thousand dollars that you decided that you want to have in conventional loan program, to be able to stack that up with their funds in order to be able to have the program last longer. It's also been suggested that we look at, looking at other grant dollars in order to be able to supplement this fund, which certainly could be in the future. And the last recommendation was to potentially diversify the EDIF Commission, meaning adding more members and having some of those members be bankers or from different communities that aren't necessarily represented. It by no means said that, you know, we should not have the members we currently have, just expanding the number of people that sat on that commission and make sure that they have different backgrounds and diversities. And that's what I have for you today and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
You've done an amazing job since taking over, really expanding the toolbox that we have for economic development and I think it shows through product that you and your team put out and the awards the county is winning as a result and the businesses that you help. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. And it is a team effort and it's a county-wide effort. We have great relationships and partnerships with pretty much all the departments and we couldn't do it without our team. They work really hard because they're in it to win it, just like we are and the county is as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Excellent.
He did a model, but they didn't call you Chris.
There's probably a lot of good reasons for that. Some you don't want to know.
Okay, Commissioners, Tab Six, Item Number Three is our next, we actually have a very special proclamation here, number twenty-four dash zero eight for Mr. John Nickerson. So, John, would you come on up, please? I've known John my entire career, so he's been the Environmental Health Director for, to me, forever, which is, I've been here over thirty years. So, I'll tell you a little bit about what we're going to talk about next, I guess, right?
Yes, very good. Well, I get the pleasure and the honor of reading this proclamation. I've been on the job for eleven years and John, every time, if there's an event anywhere and John's there, I'm going to make sure I'm right there in his hip pocket because, one, the jokes are great and two, you know, just that easy feeling, it's always a joy to be around with you.
Did we hire you when you were ten?
Eight, seventy-four.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, here you go. I'm going to give this a shot. Proclamation twenty-four dash zero eight, whereas John E. Nickerson stands today as an example of Queen Anne's County's best and most dedicated officials to serve our local county residents, starting his career as a sanitarian one, excuse me, one, in Dorchester County on January thirty-first, nineteen-seventy-three, and transferring to Queen Anne's County April first, nineteen-seventy-four. And whereas John, and whereas John E. Nickerson was reclassified to Environmental Health Assistant Director effective July one, eighteen-eighty-five, and whereas, effective July one, nineteen-eighty-seven, John E. Nickerson became Environmental Health Director when the director at the time, James Morris, retired. Whereas John E. Nickerson served as Acting Health Officer from May fourteenth, twenty-twelve, through August seventh, twenty-twelve, and whereas John E. Nickerson has served on the Queen Anne's County Plumbing Board as an advisor member for thirty-eight years. And whereas John E. Nickerson has acted as President of the Maryland Environmental Health Directors Association and whereas, with his vast knowledge and experience, John E. Nickerson has testified on many occasions to the Maryland Legislature in support of or against proposed legislation. And whereas John E. Nickerson has and is still serving as a member of the Animal Control Board, and whereas John E. Nickerson worked tirelessly and played an instrumental part in running the much-needed public sewer, not only to Bay City and Cloverfields, but to the properties of the South Kent Island, and now therefore be it resolved that we, the county commissioners of Queen Anne's County, on behalf of the entirety of Queen Anne's County, do hereby honor and recognize John E. Nickerson for fifty years of dedicated and distinguished service to the land and citizens of Queen Anne's County.
I want to thank you, gentlemen. It's been a pleasure working with you. Personally, you know, my roots are way deep in Queen Anne's County and it's been a pleasure to work with the professionalism that's in the commissioner body and I just want to thank you for that.
Well, the first fifty years were the hard ones. The second fifty are much easier. So, you don't have to worry about that. So, this is for you, my friend.
Thank you.
Can we, let's get a picture.
Let's do that.
So, why did the teacher not let the students go on the class week yesterday?
She did want them to hurt their pupils.
Yeah, you should save them up for a while, too.
Wow.
Commissioner DuBanelle will be at the open mic night at the cult classic following the meeting.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, Commissioners, our next item this evening is Item Number Four under Presentations, Tab Six, once again. Item forty, or Page Number Forty-five and Forty-six. And this is the annual tax set-off hearing with our incorporated towns. So, I think we have a few members of our lovely incorporated towns here, so they have an opportunity to come up and say a few words about the tax offset proposed for the FY twenty-five budget. So, you want to call them up?
Yeah, we'll see if, anyone here from Barclay?
All right.
Here we go.
Well, not Virginia? All right. Good to see you.
Hey, Virginia.
Hey, Virginia.
I think it's been a year since I've been in here.
Missed much.
My name's Virginia Albers and I serve as the town manager for the town of Barclay. I'd like to thank you for the tax set-off money and it's always a help every year and we look forward to it. Not much going on in Barclay. We're trying to get the sewer project finished. It's eighty-six percent complete. They have eleven grinder pumps online and ten are ready to go. So, they're ahead of schedule. They have until August first to complete it, but they're, you know, they haven't run into too much bad weather, so, except a little rain. Anyway, you know, we'd just like to thank you. And another thing we're working on, I just hired a grants writer. We need a building. We don't, we don't have any place to meet. Right now, we're in Brian Demont Chesapeake Barriole's shop, workshop. So, we're going to try to get some money rounded up so we can get a, get a community building.
Margie, we've been there, right? Yeah, we went there.
Probably so, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
No. Are there any other towns you're working with?
Churchill.
Churchill. Well...
Rose is here, so...
Charlie, you want to come up?
Stay right there, Virginia, come on.
Sure.
Virginia.
Has Barclay ever had a town hall?
No, it's about twelve by twelve.
Technically, you can't say never. They do have one.
They do have one, yeah.
You could get four people in there.
No bathroom. We're getting a grinder pump.
Where's the window?
There's a window.
How you doing, Charlie?
Good, man. How you doing?
Good to see you.
It's good to be seen.
Absolutely.
Well, I'm going to thank you all. I'm here, obviously, representing the town of Churchill and population of about eight-hundred-and-ten. We have six square miles approximately and want to thank you for your support on this tax set-off or tax differential. We've had many discussions over my thirty years of being a town commissioner and the system seems to be working very well for us. The amount that's been proposed in this year's budget represents about ten percent of our general fund budget for the town of Churchill and it's very much needed and very much appreciated. As far as issues going on in Churchill right now, it's the last of our developments that was started about twenty years ago in planning has been sold and to a new developer and there's forty-two lots left and they expect to have them all sold by the end of this year and not build out, but sold. The new developer is in partnership with a national builder. They acquired the property about a month ago and they've already, as I understand, have seventeen homes under contract since they started. So, that's going to be a good thing. We had hoped to receive some money from the Maryland Department of Environment to upgrade and enhance our sewer treatment plant and we've been having negotiations or discussions with them over the last two years. Unfortunately, that didn't occur, but fortunately, we held a big portion of our art funds back and we're going to undertake that ourselves, the initial part of it. And we expect to have that started by the end of this month and have it completed by the end of this calendar year. So, and basically, it's aimed at improving the water quality of the discharge. It didn't expand the plant. It's hoping to improve it. So, that's where we're at. And again, I want to thank you, gentlemen, and all your staff and especially the Public Works folks, the economic development folks, the Sheriff's Department and the guys that manage that very nice park up there. It gets a lot of use.
It's turf.
Oh, yeah. And we get a lot of positive comments. And we're still working on a tennis court and I understand we've got some folks that would like to play some pickleball up there as well. So, but we've had some conversations and hopefully that'll move forward into the future. And if you have any questions, I'd be remiss. Virginia is assisting us as an administrative assistant in our town hall, assisting our town manager Nancy Lindenberg and it's all working out well. And, you know, from a COG standpoint, a council of government standpoint, we've, I have told, and we as a group, as commissioners, have told Virginia, if they needed to utilize a town hall for a meeting from Barclay, they're welcome in Churchill as well.
Maybe that.
And she is also, we've told her when things are a little slow in Churchill, she can also take a little time to work on some of the Barclay issues.
There you go.
That's where we're at.
They're treating me well.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
Town of Centerville, come on down.
I have nothing.
You have nothing? You're the only one here from Centerville?
Only one.
Only one.
I think it's the first, the lone wolf.
Okay.
Jeff's got them straight. They don't need to come here now.
Anyone from Millington?
No.
Queen Anne?
It's really a pleasure to come up and see you. There were times when I thought I had an arm wrestle for nickels, and now we've worked out a procedure that's very fair and equitable and recognizes the joint responsibilities that the municipalities and the county chair and those that are provided independently. So, again, I want to thank you very much for everything that's going on. I wear a couple of hats, so I'm going to put another hat on, and I want to thank you for your donation to Reeds Across America. It's very much appreciated. About eight years ago, the first time I went to the Veterans Memorial Cemetery in Hurlock, there was one wreath for every six graves, and I personally had difficulty deciding which veteran I was going to honor and which one I was going to respect. And so, a group of us got together with Reeds Across America to try to have a real campaign going on within the Eastern Shore to provide a wreath for every grave that's there. And since our veterans are dying, the cemetery is expanding, so the need for wreaths increases. So, I want to thank you for your contribution. It's very much appreciated, and it goes for a higher purpose.
Come back and see us when you need it.
So, thank you. I will.
Absolutely.
And then I'll put on my third hat.
Okay.
Okay? And that is every year, I do make a request for the commissioners to support the fireworks in Queenstown. We normally do this, like we don't compete with the Narrows for 4th of July or for Centerville. This is normally done at the end of the summer months, after Labor Day, when the volunteer fire department has its fundraiser. And we always have a day with fireworks, and if you would see it in your budget to do some funding for that, it would be greatly appreciated.
Very well.
I have no more hats.
Do you just want to...
Yeah, we can do enough. What did we give last year?
They gave us $5,000, and then we got some matching donations from the bank, an additional donation from the Washington-Brickin-Terracotta Golf Course.
Make a motion now. Go ahead. Make a motion. But understand that the costs of our fireworks have gone up, so I imagine the cost or theirs is going to go up.
Yes.
So, keep that in mind when you make a motion.
I make a motion to support Queenstown Town or Fireworks for their September Fair in the amount of $7,500.
Thank you.
Question, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you very much.
Now, before you leave, you want to give us an update on...
Sure.
What's going on at Wheatlands?
Wheatlands is, I started working on the Wheatlands project when I was very young. You know, it probably was the age when our sanitary man came in, and we've gone through three generations of Wheatlands families.
Wow.
You know, here. But right now, Wheatlands has completely gone through the planning process. We have an agreement in principle as how to get water and sewer under the highway to the facility. Wheatlands will be built in three phases. The first is the commercial phase that's adjacent to the highway, and there is site clearing going on there. We expect our first look, official look at the project plan. We've seen pro forma plans, but not the actual development things. The second phase goes, is the area behind that, and it has a, another, what we would call interior commercial. It's the things that you would provide amenities to a development. You know, that's where the barber shops, the dry cleaners, the Starbucks, the things that are providing services for the development will be built. And then the houses themselves are done in two other phases. We've approved design concepts for the houses, but that hasn't been given to a developer yet. So, that's where we are. We've had preliminary discussions with Washington-Brickin-Terracotta, which owns the golf course. They were at our last planning board, designs for a conference center and three additional cottages on that facility.
On the course.
On the course.
On the golf course.
On the golf course.
Great idea. Good idea.
You know, and I think, I think the concept of the conference center, I may have been 20 when that first proposal came in, so things go slowly, but maybe in a more planned way.
So, do you know any of the commercial buildings, any of what's coming, going in Wheatlands? Is any...
I've heard, and I don't judge until I see something.
Okay, that's fine.
You know, if I told you anything, it'd be wrong tomorrow.
Right, no problem.
It'd be wrong tomorrow, because the, you know, the, it changes every week.
Sure.
It changes.
We know about that.
Changes every week. Other than that, within the town itself, there's been a lot of work down, been down on the docks and the waterfront of the park area there. We still, like all towns, have INI issues. In parts of town, the water pipes and sewer lines were put in during the WPA, so they're very, very old, and we're probably going to be using our ARPA funds to do that.
How about the firehouse? How are things progressing with the new firehouse?
The firehouse has reached an agreement with the Dudleys to acquire the land, and that's been finalized. The, how fast they're going, I think they're beginning fundraising this fall. They're going to have to begin some fundraising to have some matching funding. We've seen plans, very, very preliminary, very, very preliminary plans. And then what they're going to use the existing firehouse for is the firemen are debating that.
It's a what?
They're debating it.
Oh, okay. Undecided.
They're undecided.
They want to incorporate EMS 300?
Yeah. EMS will be there.
At the new, at the new building, too, so...
EMS has a pretty significant portion of that building.
Yes.
Has a pretty significant portion of the building.
Of course, as a county.
And since I get older every day, I'm very thankful that the EMS is there.
Oh, there you go. They're not far from me either, so...
Yeah, that's right. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other things? Sudlersville. No Sudlersville. And Templeville. There we go. All right.
All right, well, that concludes the tax set-off hearings for this year. Any other comments from the board? We're good?
No, good. Entertained a motion?
I move to set the differential rates and old payment amounts.
Aide.
Aide payment amounts for and to the municipalities for fiscal year 2025 as shown in the attached schedule.
Second. A motion to second. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved. There we go.
Great. Thank you, commissioners. All right, we have one final presentation there in tab number six, item five, page 47. This is a Month of the Young Child, Proclamation 2404. And is Julie Valicello here? Julie, did I say that right? Julie, come on. Valicello, okay. Come on up, Julie.
Thanks, everyone, this evening.
How you doing? Great.
Hello, commissioners. Just let everybody get settled, but...
Do you have anybody else with you?
They can come up if you...
If they want.
I have other people from our Month of the Young Child Committee...
Somebody let some kids sit up here.
Our Children's Council. If anyone would like to sit up front, would you like to sit up front? Carmella, would you like to sit up front?
Yeah, come on. Come on.
Would you like to sit?
There we go.
That's right.
Perfect.
Okay, ladies. Well, good evening, commissioners. My name is Julie Valicello. I'm a member of the Queen Anne's County Council for Children and Youth. We're here to proclaim and celebrate April as the Month of the Young Child. This year is the 27th year that we are, have been celebrating Month of the Young Child with the Children's Council. The council was formed in 1971, and we act as an advocate for children and families in Queen Anne's County. We're comprised of members of our business community, government agencies, nonprofits, and our community at large. Many members are in attendance tonight, so if anybody wants to wave from the QA Children's Council, and we have members, parents as well, and families. Let's see. To celebrate the Month of the Young Child and to recognize our youngest members of our community, we hold an annual poster contest for children ages two years through pre-K and then kindergarten through second grade. The contest is distributed through daycares and elementary schools throughout Queen Anne's County. Tonight, we officially recognize and celebrate our winners of the poster art contest. This year's poster contest theme, and we have a theme each year, and this year's theme, "If I Were President of the United States, I Would." And then the students completed the sentence.
That had been a long list.
There were some very interesting, everyone wanted world peace and to end wars, and so it was very thoughtful and meaningful. And then the children designed their artwork to go along with how they finished the sentence. We received a total of 519 entries. So, it's the most we've ever received to date, and all were very creative. So, it was very hard for the committee members to make, you know, to choose just two winners, and we would love to choose all of them, because they were all wonderful.
That many entries shouldn't surprise you considering the subject matter.
I think it was interesting, yes. So, it was right timely, right? So, the winner of the two-year to pre-K category is Carmella Rogers, and... And Carmella is a five-year-old, and she's in Mrs. Darby's class. Unfortunately, Mrs. Darby can't be with us tonight. She's not feeling very well, right? But she said congratulations. And Carmella goes to Sudlersville Elementary School. Her poster reads, would you like to read it, or you want me to read it? Okay, no problem. Okay. So, she finished the sentence, "If I were president of the United States, I would share and make, I would share and make world peace."
Very good.
So, we're all very... And this is her artwork.
Wow. Yeah, very nice. That's great. That's way better than anything I could do, that's for sure.
So, I'm going to give that to you. Excellent. And then the winner of the kindergarten through second grade category is Ryan Lockwood, and... Ryan is a six-year-old in Miss Hazuda's class at Centerville Elementary School, and her poster reads, would you like to read it? You want me to? Okay, okay. "If I were president of the United States, I would treat others the way you want to be treated."
Yeah.
Inspiring.
Very good.
Congratulations to both of our winners. There you go. And then also, as part of this initiative, Chad Cronshaw is from the Shore United Bank, and he's here to present both of our winners with a very generous gift card.
Congratulations. Yeah, that's great. Though we certainly can't compete with a bank.
Well, actually, we could, but we won't.
I have here the Queen Anne's County challenge coin. So, when you get your driver's license, that'll get you out of a speeding ticket. That's for you.
And that's for you, the sheriff.
Very nice. And a pencil. And these are the Queen Anne's County pins that we wear on our lapels of our jackets. This is for you guys, put on your backpacks.
Ooh. Cool. Thank you, commissioners.
I'm going to read the proclamation, and then we're going to get a picture with the leaders.
Great, great. Sounds wonderful.
All right, it is Proclamation 2404. Whereas the month of April has been designated the month of the young child by the state of Maryland, and whereas children are vitally important to the state and to the future of this country, and whereas a safe, stable, and equally accessible environment for our children is of importance to Queen Anne's County, and whereas we know that as a community, we must ensure that our children are healthy emotionally, physically, intellectually, socially, and mentally in order to promote successful growth into adulthood, and whereas we as a community know the importance of working with agencies, businesses, organizations, and schools in helping our young children to be ready for school and continue to be successful in their school career, and whereas we recognize the importance of being intentional in building positive assets and opportunities for our children, and whereas we recognize the importance of seeing our children as a positive resource for the present and future of our community, and whereas we realize that it takes all the community members to help our children grow in positive ways and in character, and whereas we call upon all Queen Anne's County citizens to join together to ensure that love, laughter, support, and encouragement is a daily part of our children's lives, and now therefore, we, the county commissioners of Queen Anne's County, do hereby designate the month of April as the month of the young child in Queen Anne's County. Yeah. And now, we're going to come down for some pictures.
Great. Wonderful. Okay, so stand with your artwork.
Are you guys going to sit in these chairs? Do you want them to hold their pictures up? It'll help with...
The girls...
They're spread out. Are you guys going to hold your pictures up? Do you want them to share together?
Sit in the chairs, everybody can hold your pictures.
Yeah, the special chairs. You're like the boss is here today.
Why don't we have a seat?
......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Like I'm on my phone.
Amy, you wanna come up?
Shh.
I might forget the rest of the room, I mean.
We good?
we have some action. Excuse me, we have one piece of legislation, so if you want to turn to tab seven. We have county ordinance 2408. This is the rewrite of the animal control ordinance. This was introduced in February 27th by Commissioner Wilson. We had a hearing on March 26th. I don't think we have had any public comment on this rewrite of our animal control ordinance, so it is, it is ready for consideration. Motion to adopt county ordinance 2408.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, and we thank our Animal Control Commission for their good work on rewriting our ordinance.
A lot of time on that. It's really a great work.
All right, Commissioners, we can move to tab number three. We have 12 action items for this evening. So tab three, excuse me, item one, pages one through three is the semi-annual property tax payment service fee. As you know, the county tax collector is authorized to bill a service fee for the lost interest and administrative costs associated with the semi-annual property tax billing, and we have to get approval from the State Department of Assessments and Taxation to do that. However, we are not recommending any charge for this service for the '24, '25 tax year. I move to submit to the Department of Assessment and Taxation approval form for the establishment of county municipal service fees for semi-annual property tax payments, a service fee charge in the amount of zero percent.
Second.
A motion, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Have we ever, I don't even remember if we ever.
There was a time. I remember paying it back in the day, but I don't think anymore. Not recently. Not, not any time recently, no. No, it hasn't been any time recently, for sure. We can check on it. Do you know if there's been any?
Oh, I, I mean, I'm just curious.
I was gonna say, like when it first went into effect. Yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, five oh.
That was a fleeting.
There was a fleeting.
Okay, Commissioners, moving right along. Item number two on pages four and five, we have a vendor recommendation for the Municipal Economic Development Consulting for the town of Southersville. And this is a project for the implementation of a comprehensive economic development plan for the town of Southersville. The project is funded via Rural Maryland Economic Development Fund grant in the amount of $70,000. We heard about that earlier this evening. They received 12 proposals. A review team of town councilmen from Southersville and our economic development staff met, ranked the proposals, and they're recommending John Stover and Associates based on their approach and their experience and background in land use and previous work samples. And their budget came in under budget, or their quote came in under budget at $69,925. I move to approve the selection of John Stover and Associates as the vendor for Municipal Economic Development Consulting for the town of Southersville.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Stained? So moved. All right, thank you, Commissioners. Item three on pages six and seven, this is from the EDIF, the Economic Development Incentive Fund Commission. They're recommending approval of a conditional loan of $26,140 to Anchored Hope Home Care for the startup of a home healthcare practice at 203 Roman Coke Road. I move to approve the disbursement of up to $26,140 from the Economic Development Incentive Fund to Anchored Hope Home Care LLC for the purchase of equipment, electronic medical record expenses for the new residential home healthcare business in Stevensville. Disbursement of funds is contingent upon a signed agreement between EDIF Commission and Anchored Hope Home Care LLC, and will outline the condition of the agreement and performance of the project in accordance with the application submitted to the EDIF Commission.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
So how did, how, there you go. How did we, how did she find us? How did we find her?
She reached out to us to talk about her business and financing needs, and then we told her about this, this program. And Monica Young is her name, and she has worked this consistently, and the plan is really well done, and she's gone before EDIF and made a presentation. And it's, it's very much a needed service in the area. She already has the office set up, ready to go. She's just waiting for this funding and for her license to come in the mail, which should be any time now. And this, this agreement will be subject to her having that license, but it's already been approved. It's just waiting for it to come, and then she'll get started. So it's a little bit, $26,000 for equipment, and then they'll be able to roll.
So I actually had an opportunity to meet with this, this gal. She was a mutual friend. She asked if she could bend my ear, and we spoke and actually had lunch, and she told me all about this, this project and what she was doing and how it was gonna benefit our community. And I said, "You have to reach out to a young lady by the name of Heather Tonelli." So thank you very much for helping her out, and this is one amazing lady, I'll tell you.
She's, they've done the work, you know. They, their plan is really well thought through.
Not only is it needed, I mean, there's a short supply of this type of care, and of the care that there is, a lot of them are big, you know, conglomerate, Bayata Health and things like that, so this is a good deal.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Glad she found you.
Heather. Commissioners, item four on page eight, we have proclamation 2406, Child Abuse Prevention Month.
I have the duties. Proclamation 2406, whereas Queen Anne's County future quality of life depends on the safe and healthy development of children residing in communities across our county, and whereas Queen Anne's County seeks to raise awareness of child abuse prevention and support for children who have suffered abuse, and whereas Queen Anne's County Child Abuse Response and Evaluation, or CARE, Center reports more than 25 of the youngest and most vulnerable citizens seek support each year for abuse through our Child Advocacy Center, and whereas effective, effective child abuse prevention and support efforts to child victims and families succeed because of partnerships created among local law enforcement, human service agencies, legal experts, healthcare providers, mental health experts, and other agencies dedicated to improving the lives of children. And whereas Maryland has adopted laws to protect children's victims' rights and provided essential services, our public and private sectors must continue to work collaboratively to maintain and improve programs and legislation that will benefit these youngsters and most vulnerable victims. And whereas Queen Anne's County calls on citizens, community agencies, medical and mental health providers, elected officials, schools, and businesses to increase their collaboration with CARE Center in support of children's victims, child victims of maltreatment, and to prevent child abuse and strengthen the community in which we live. Now therefore, the county commissioners of Queen Anne's County do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Queen Anne's County, signed by the county commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Dimon. All right, item five on page nine is proclamation 2412, Volunteer Appreciation Month.
Proclamation 24-12, whereas in honor of Volunteer Appreciation Month, Queen Anne's County Area Agency on Aging appreciates all the volunteers that give of their time and talents to keep the senior centers functioning successfully, and whereas we honor those that assist in various areas of the centers such as site council, front desk, DJ, data equipment, sorry, data entry, kitchen help, evening dance music and entertainment, bingo shopping and callers, class instruction, special event help, library maintenance, and so much more. And whereas the Queen Anne's County senior, senior citizens throughout the county benefit from the services volunteers provide, and whereas Queen Anne's County senior center staff also get abundant support from the volunteers, and whereas the senior centers and active aging center will honor their volunteers at the centers in the month of April 2024, and now therefore we, the county commissioners of Queen Anne's County, recognize and appreciate all the volunteers that give of themselves, their time, and talents to keep the senior centers and active aging centers functioning for the senior citizens in our community.
Thank you. You, Commissioner Corkarino, for reading that. Okay, item seven on pages 15 through 18, this is a road name change request submitted by a local contractor, Mr. Dale Grimes, three, for a three-lot subdivision located on Spring Road in Millington, and they want to. Todd, you skipped past number six, ordinance 2401. Excuse me, excuse me. You're right. All right. We'll back up to item number six, ordinance 2401. Thank you very much, Commissioners. This is a non-water dependent structure on piers. This is proposed ordinance 2401. That was for non-water dependent structures on state or private wetlands within the critical area. The Commissioners introduced and sent a conceptual approval of this on February 13th to the Critical Area Commission. They've now responded back and said it is approved as a refinement to our program. So now the next step is to schedule a public hearing. Move to schedule a public hearing for county ordinance 2401.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, now item seven for the road name change request, pages 15 through 18. This is for a road name request for a property in three-lot subdivision in Millington, Spring Road in Millington, and they'd like to name this private right-of-way Spring Brook Lane.
I move to approve the name, naming of private property right-of-way on Spring Road, Spring Brook Lane.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
The sign be green or blue?
The private road sign blades are typically blue, yes. Private roads. Okay.
How many, how many more of the Big Daddy Way signs do we have in DCW? Because I noticed it's down again.
Is it down again? I think they have at least two out there. Stand by.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
It's gone?
It's gone.
Big Daddy Way, or Big Daddy Drive. Can't we put a trail cam on that thing or something?
I think we have to. I didn't see it today when I went by, and there was, looked like some. Why don't we just make a whole bunch of them? Put them in a basket and say, "Help yourself." Take one.
Leave the post, take one.
Leave $5. It's an honor thing. We'll electrify it.
Electrify it. We will check on that, Commissioner. Thank you for that.
I'm an electrician, it's work.
Yeah, put a couple heavy-duty capacitors out there, and seen that work before.
Pretty sure I didn't see it this morning.
Okay, we will, we will check on that tomorrow. Okay, moving on, item number eight on pages 19 through 95, we have a series of revised human resource policies that our Employee Communications and Morale Committee have been working on with Ms. Beverly Churchill, our Director of Human Resources. So there's a number of those here, including military leave of absence and reemployment rights, part-time employees, payroll procedures, performance evaluations, personal days, prorating for new employees, personnel records, recruitment, separation of employment, sick and safe leave, sick leave, credit transfer, sick leave donation, space heater policy for the wintertime, temporary modified duty program, tobacco-free policy, vacation payout policy, volunteer policy, and work-related injury or illness policies. So 17 altogether. As I mentioned, Beverly is here if you have any questions on any of those, but we do recommend adoption of these updates to our human resource policies. Nothing in there for county commissioners? Can you come read all these to us first?
Nothing to enhance the, our efforts.
I move that the presented policy provisions be adopted and be effective in seven business days unless otherwise indicated.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? Great job, Beverly. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All right, thank you, Commissioners. Item number nine on pages 96 through 99 is the Housing Bond Allocation Transfer for 2024. And in order for the State Department of Housing and Community Development to utilize our housing bond allocation, the participating local government must transfer its allocation in writing, and we do recommend execution of the letter, and this, this helps with first-time home buyers, and most jurisdictions do this across the state, and we always, we always benefit from this program.
We move that President, Commission President Jim Moran sign the transfer of allocation letter to the Department of Housing and Community Development as described and recommended by the Department of Community Services and Housing Division.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's five oh. All right, thank you, Commissioners. Item 10 on pages 100 through 106 is amended forest conservation plat for Prospect Plantation West, partial release of forest conservation easement, and this particular owner is requesting approval for a partial release of a forest conservation easement due to a surplus on the property associated with the recent approval of a telecommunications, telecommunications tower on the site. And this reduces the two protected forested areas by a total of .58 acres, leaving a remaining surplus of 2.72 acres.
I move to execute the partial release of forest conservation easement for the Prospect Plantation West Development Plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is, is that, is that number 12? Long par five? At Prospect Bay? No, that's the short par three for it. That's number 12. That's the par three. Okay, I'm just trying to get my bearings as to where, where exactly this is, and I might add, I hit a hole-in-one on that hole.
Oh.
Yeah, you built that in there?
Hole-in-one, man.
Had to throw that in there.
Then add a boy. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion further?
Any more?
Being none, shouldn't be. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five oh, Margie. Commissioners, item number 11 is from our Department of Health. It's the FY25 block grant application for Maryland's, to Maryland's Office of Overdose Response, and they're applying for Maryland Office of Overdose Response for their block grant in four separate areas, for overdose coordinator, continuum, continuum of care, mat services, anti-stigma, and community education for the four areas that they're looking for this grant.
I move to execute the Queen Anne's Department of Health application to Maryland Office of Overdose Response FY2025 block grant program.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Another five oh, Margie. Thank you, Commissioners. Our final item this evening, item 12 on pages 123 and 137 is a Rural Legacy Agreement of Sale and Project Agreement for Barry and Diana Waterman. This is for a 30, 30.951-acre property owned by Barry and Diane Waterman for submission to the Maryland Department of Natural Resources for review and approval. Total funding is provided by the Rural Legacy Grants Program through Program Open Space, no county funds. Project is located within the Lands End Rural Legacy Area, and will add to that area that over 5,000 acres that are currently preserved.
I move to execute the Rural Legacy Agreement of Sale and Project Agreement for Barry P. Waterman Trustee and Diana Waterman Trustee.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Commissioners, that is, that is all of our action items this evening. No press, public comment. Anybody online, or an email, or nothing? Okay, we'll go right to the roundtable, and Phil, we'll let you go first.
Okay, so Spring isn't really officially here until the, the youth baseball and softball programs have their, their parade in opening day, which will be taking place this Saturday. So if you don't have any plans in the morning, come out, check out the kids in their uniforms as they parade through downtown Stevensville, and throw candy.
This is the one where you gotta pick the winner?
Yes, you get to be there too, right? You're gonna come and help judge?
Are you gonna judge?
Yeah.
I might have to do that, but I thought that was bad luck.
No, you listen to the sheriff too much.
Don't listen to law enforcement.
Yeah. Yeah, being a judge in your community for things is-
I mean, you gotta pick between six-year-olds, it gets tough. You know the banners. It's all good. All done?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I got. So, uh, parade start, start staging at eight, and we'll start shortly before nine.
My man. Jack?
So, uh, signing die was Monday, so Annapolis is officially closed for another nine months. Um, I, best I could say about this session was in like a lion, out like a lamb. There was a lot of rumblings about some pretty bad stuff that was gonna happen, but I think luckily the budget took center stage in the eleventh hour and kinda may have diverted some of the things that we were, uh, speaking about early on that looked like, uh, bad things for Queen Anne's County and the sure in general that kinda just faded away. Um, terms of taxes, about the only thing that you can really talk about was fees, um, which is still taxed, it's a three-letter word, but, um, on most automobile things. So when you go to DMV, um, just about everything went up. I think a regular vehicle registration's going up ninety-eight dollars, um, for one registration cycle. Um, the one thing I was looking for, and I haven't been able to confirm yet, is if they did take our illustrious administrators group's suggestion and put some kind of a fee on the electric cars, which right now basically pay nothing, into-
Yeah, there's a fee on it.
It was like it's supposed to be set at a hundred dollars.
Hundred twenty-five or a hundred fifty, some, somewhere around there.
Yeah, originally it was a hundred in the bill, but I didn't know whether it squeaked through, because, okay, good. So, and that's good, because for obvious reasons, those vehicles are on the roads and we're not, not getting that. And the other thing about this is, and what we gotta look at, is these, all of these increases are designated to go onto the, uh, transportation trust fund, so they're not general fund expenditures. It's to backfill some of the money we're losing for the roads right now. But, yeah, like I said, all in all, none of the solar things really materialize that they could have, so, um, and, uh, county government, as we know it in Queen Anne's County, is intact for one more year, so.
It's a shame they couldn't get those amendments in there for our cannabis.
Yeah, cannabis. We did get the transparency bill for education spending.
Nice.
So that's nice, uh, so that they will have to prescribe to something similar to what all our county departments do in terms of disclosing their budgeting, so that'll be a, for us and the commissioner's side, I don't know how much the public's gonna benefit from it, but I know we certainly will, so, um, yeah, other than that, like I said, in like a lion, there was a lot of talk of a lot of bad things, and so, I mean, I, I give the governor credit, I give kudos where they deserved, he cut the budget, and he stood by, and, you know, said he wasn't gonna raise taxes, and they didn't raise taxes, so, and that's all I got.
Good. Boss?
Um, open house, town hall tomorrow for, uh, the ramp management. Uh, please come by, please watch the videos, um, about what can and can't be done. Uh, spoiler alert, can't do EZ Pass for just locals to use the side roads, um, which we have said before, but I've still getting that question, so just let people know. Um, if you'd like to know more about that, there's like, I wanna, a couple-year process even for putting tolls somewhere, that, and it's the state government, so it's just, it's, one, it's illegal, two, even when you do use EZ Pass, it's like a huge ordeal, um, and the cost, the cost would be, I don't, every exit would have to have EZ Pass and readers, you'd probably thirty million dollars. I appreciate that people offer that suggestion, but I think it's taken us ten years to get the state to put cones up at a ramp. And so I, keep in mind, that, this is what we're working with, right? This is a small incremental win that we have here, and, you know, the big, huge infrastructure projects, that's not gonna happen. They got a new bridge to build right now, like, the other alternatives are just not happening.
We've tried for two years now to get Red X cameras.
Yeah.
A simple thing like that.
Yeah.
And that's, I mean, that's-
Bottom line is that easy, whole EZ Pass idea. While it sounds great, it, it's really not even feasible.
I agree, it's as good as it is, because you'd have cars pulling up there, the gate would stay down, now you're blocking the road, and what do you do from there?
Have more traffic?
Yeah, it's just-
Yeah, it would be a nightmare.
So what, we'll be there to answer those questions and, and more, um, but rest assured, we weren't just like throwing darts about, well, what idea can we use for traffic? Let's give that a shot. I mean, the, uh, there has been more than a decade of thought into trying to get this together, and, um, traffic engineers looking at it, and it's not just, you know, elected officials doing it on their own, there's a lot of thought that has gone into this, and we acknowledge it's not the best idea in the world, but there isn't, um, a best idea. People are gonna be inconvenienced, um, no matter what gets done. Um, there are short-term, and there are long-term goals, right? And so in the short term, we're trying to mitigate the impact of traffic as much as possible, um, but come out, we'll talk more about that. Um, you know, another thing I wanted to bring up, Phil brings up, you know, with the Little League playing this weekend, and then the gentleman here was here who, um, had his life saved.
Wow.
Because we have AEDs that are out there, and I think that, I hear a lot of people say, like, oh, this is not the county I, I remember, not the county I grew up in. I've been here since nineteen eighty-eight, so, you know, went to school here, I got, you know, I know I'm, I'm still a chicken necker, doesn't matter, uh, but I've been here a while, and, and I have seen a lot of the changes. And, uh, you know, when I was here, we didn't have the kind of parks that we have now.
No.
Um, and we didn't have emergency services, right? And we didn't have the funding to help volunteer fire department. I mean, so, we will say, what do we get? You know, there's some downsides when new things get built here, right? But you also get, that gentleman has his life, because this county has the financial resources to make sure that we don't have a hospital in this county, but i- if we get to you and we get your heart beating, we will get you to some of the best facilities for medical treatment in the world, or within an hour's drive of here, and we'll keep you alive and get you there. I mean, and, and when we're trying to decide on things, we're right in, in the middle of, you know, budget, and trying to get money of how do you take care of everything, and, and the huge cost overruns that we're getting from Board of Education that has just allowed their budget to go way out of control. I mean, it's up astronomically in the last couple of years, right?
Yeah.
Um, and we have to balance everything, but we gotta make sure that that guy has his life saved, you know, and, and that, and that the kids have an opportunity to, to engage in, in recreations and baseball, so they can, you know, play it in high school and get scholarships. And those are the real workings of local government that we do all day and all, you know, day in and day out. And these developments that people complain about, like, what do we have, like, once a year, twice a year, that we have something that we even vote on remotely related to? It's such a small portion, um, and I'm, as someone who has voted for and against things, you know, in the county, right? I, not any reconceived notions, but I think people need to keep in mind, we have controlled growth in this county at a, at a, at a rate significantly less than what the state of Maryland has, has grown at.
Right.
But when you look at the, what Heather said, two point two, two point three percent unemployment in this county, right? Because we're able to put resources into making sure that we have a strong economy here. If you, if you talk to the sheriff, right, lowest crime level, right? Because we have the resources that we can put into, um, for, for law enforcement. Our schools are really good, right? We, we turn out really great students because we have the resources. When I was growing up, I had to go from Kent Island to Queen Anne's County High School. That's where, that was, there were only one high school in the county. There was no Kent Island High School. Um, and there was, there was lacrosse and, and football, and maybe some tennis. That was the only sports you really had, right? Like, there was not a lot of things. So there, there's the good with the bad, and I think people need to remember that we try to balance all of that. And, um, and, you know, hearing somebody come and having their life saved because we were able to fund those critical, important things, that, to me, that's what we do. This is what the job's about.
Yeah, well, you take into fact that, you know, population's only grown by less than two thousand over ten years, but we also instituted in the last, I think it's, uh, five years, uh, two additional paramedic units, twenty-four seven out there.
Yep.
So we didn't have an explosion of growth, and we were still able to do that, not to mention all the turf fields, our, our, our parks, our pickleball that, I mean, you know, you, I agree with you a hundred percent. The amenities that we're able to bring, it's about the quality of life.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, I just think that, uh, I think-
I think it's some, for me personally, Jim, not to cut you off like that, but while I got it in my head, it's, what's disingenuous for me is when I hear people that have only lived here for four years, talk about-
Oh, yeah.
-the growth and all that, and I think to myself, and I, Chris, I'm only here three years less than you, I came here in ninety-one, you know, so, chicken necker, you know, and all that. And, and, yeah, I've seen, I moved to rural Queen Anne's County and North County where there were only eight homes, all the way back to my home, right? So, I mean, I get it, and I've seen it, and probably I have fifty back there now. But I'm not complaining about it, because to you, the point you're both making is, it makes life for everybody around better. So even the person's been here four years, fifty years, forty years, thirty years, everybody's life is, benefits from that next person that comes over, they bring something with them, and, you know, I, I mean, sometimes people lose sight of that, certain things happen, they get mad. I get it, but-
But, but we also see that they try, you know, those, the naysayers wanna tie the beach traffic to growth in Queen Anne's County, and that's one that's irritating for me, because if that's the case, if it's this massive growth that's happened in Queen Anne's County, if that's the case, where's everybody in Queen Anne's County going on Sunday nights that's on the western shore? What's over there that the whole county's leaving for?
Why are they driving in March?
Right.
I mean, March, no problem.
So, you know, I think if you take that away, I don't, I, I think there's, the noise would really be minimal. I really do.
But the state, that's, we're the product of what the state's done. I mean, I don't say that.
Right, no, that's what I'm saying, we're, we're at the mercy, yeah, we, we understand that. But I will say that, you know, some of the deals that, that were made, uh, for instance, for Four Seasons, you know, uh, people say that that's so horrible, but your seniors are your number one volunteers in, in the community, number one. Uh, you know, they, so they bring their, their time and, and their wealth here to the county, and look, look what it's gotten us. I mean, we were able to give five million dollars to the, the new hospital, you know, and do our fair share from, from, uh, fees through that, a new eleven million dollar of freshwater wells, uh, you know, the, the restrooms on the trails, I mean, it just, it keeps coming and coming, and, and that's, we're gonna need all that. I mean, so it's a good thing, because, right, Phil, you got water there.
Yeah.
So.
And, and people don't see the, the amount of stuff that gets, like, nixed at, at the planning and zoning, like, someone comes in with ideas for developments. There, you just hear about the two things that are coming up, like, for a hearing on a, even just a concept plan, but there are tons of proposals that don't make it because they're, they're not gonna work, we've instituted things that aren't gonna allow them to happen, right? I mean, we, we are this misnomer that everything gets rubber stamped, but there is a careful review that goes on.
We have one right now, right? At the, what was gonna be a two-hundred-and-fifty condo development right there at-
Out of twenty-eight.
Right, and now it's down to twenty-eight. I mean, that's a huge-
And, and a few-room hotel, which, it's not new traffic, because the people come to those weddings, they need hotels, so they're, they're not gonna be driving, leaving hotels, they're gonna be staying right there, and then they're gonna make a weekend of it, and they're gonna go to local businesses in Queen Anne's County. To me, that, that, it's a, a huge win.
And we have a huge deficiency in hotel rooms in the county, it's well documented. Actually, bless you, I think, uh, bless you. Um, and, and actually, in this whole area on the shore in general. I mean, you know, we talk about, there's certain events we'd like to do here, even, uh, stuff that would bring, because there was talk about the balloon festival, right? But there's five, six thousand people coming in town. Where are they gonna stay? You know, we, limited hotel rooms, so, and they're always booked up from certain time of the year, you know?
So how much the hotel tax went up?
Exactly, yeah.
Can I put a plug in for our bag?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, some update. Um, we have officially distributed over four hundred of these bags to local marinas and pickup, uh, locations. So, pretty excited a, about that. So, um, if you want some more information, um, about where to get a blue bag, you can go to Queen Anne's County, it's a plastic-free Queen Anne's Counties, their website, and all the information, um, about getting your blue bag to put your shrink wrap from your boat.
Are they doing any of it yet? I mean, have they started?
Yeah, yep. Yep, there's folks getting ahead.
I don't know if they will do realising yet, because I know we've had some cold nights.
So-
Very good.
Recycle that shrink wrap, boaters.
Thank you, Tom.
And thank, and listen, by the way, thank you very much, Commissioners, for making the financial commitment to this program, um, in purchasing the bags. Thank you.
So we have a, a budget session, uh, Thursday night at-
Five o'clock.
Thank you, Thursday night at five o'clock, and could very well be our last one, maybe